Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Agara.
Here.
Connie Jackson, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of announcements this evening. The first one, there will not be a city council meeting on December 24th, the 4th, Tuesday in December. The only regular city council meeting in December will be held on December 10th, 2013. Presentations, we have two. One short one and one very long one this evening. I'm going to do 4B first, present a proclamation declaring October 12th as Arbor Day in San Bruno. And here. It's fairly short, so I'll read it. Declaring October 12th, 2013, as Arbor Day in the city of San Bruno, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, reduce heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas this year's observance and celebration will feature tree planting at 7th Avenue Park, now therefore I, Jim Ruane, mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim October 12th, 2013, as Arbor Day in the city of San Bruno. And I ask all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees, forests, and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. I believe Renee is going to accept this.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of city council. My name is Renee Walsh. I'm a park supervisor in an arboretum for the city of San Bruno. And I'm going to give you a little overview of Arbor Day and its proclamation. The National Arbor Day Foundation has recognized the city of San Bruno with a Tree City USA designation. Tree City USA status is an annual certification that confirms a community is committed to a successful community forestry program. To maintain this status, there are four standards that the city must continue to meet on an annual basis. One, city designates a department or board to manage the city's tree program. Two, a community tree ordinance has been adopted. Three, a minimum $2 per capita has been budgeted to support the forestry program. Four, establishing an annual Arbor Day observance and proclamation. As the parks division manages the city's street trees and public trees, there is an existing tree ordinance in place in the 2013-14 budget allocation for tree maintenance exceeds the minimum $2 per capita. Each of these provisions is in place. The proclamation will fulfill the requirements for this national certification. Arbor Day is a nationally celebrated observance encouraging tree planting and maintenance, established by J. Sterling Morton in Nebraska in 1872. Arbor Day has spread throughout the U.S. and is now celebrated in every state. In San Bruno, we celebrate Arbor Day in the fall because it is the optimal time for planting trees in northern California. Each year, a staff designates a park or an area in need of reforesting. Arbor Day gives the city an opportunity to educate citizens on proper tree planting and the value of community trees for today and for our future. It is also an opportunity to educate our community on the environment. On Saturday, October 12th, we will celebrate Arbor Day with the reforesting of 7th Avenue Park at 10:00 a.m. All are welcome to come and help plant trees in the park.
Thank you, Renee. Thank you for all your hard work. Our second item under presentations is present the Beautification Task Force Awards. Irene.
It's very exciting to see so many people here. And I'd like to give you a little background first about what the Beautification Awards are and who promotes them. We have a, it's called a task force, it's called the Beautification Task Force. It's a group of people who get together and meet once a month. And they dream up things to do to help beautify the city. And one of the things we dreamed up several years ago now was to give awards to businesses, individual home, families, apartments, special awards and special recognitions to people or groups that have done outstanding jobs in helping beautify our city. And we always like to recognize them. So tonight, we're doing, if you could see in the audience, we have a lot of firemen and some policemen. And we are going to do a special recognition awards to them, as, that you'll see in just a second. Before I go on with that, I'd like to say that the Beautification Task Force is the group that sponsored and urged the city to sponsor the Trees, Tree USA many years ago now. So that's one of the things we do. I'd like to introduce my members that are here. This is Sally. Sally Halber, sorry. Sandy Headley, Carolyn Livinggood, Melanie Tobin. And I think that's all that's here tonight. We also have Bridget Lopez and Carol Moriarty, who were not able to come. We have several new members. And anybody who, after you see this, would like to join us, we're on the website and you can come see when we have our next meeting. Also, I hope you all took in the goodies that were outside and had coffee and something to drink. That was provided for our setup by Vicki Hachey, our deputy city clerk. And Larry Franzel is here. One of the things we do is we give the people who win first prize a plaque. Thank you. This is what it looks like. And as you see, it is compliments of the Prudential California Realty. And Larry Franzel, who is a former council member, a former mayor of the city, is president of this company. And did you want to come and say hello at least?
Just here to congratulate everyone.
Well, come say hello. And it's good to see you.
Thank you. It's good to be back. Jim, you're really popular. I never got crowds like this. Congratulations. You're doing something right or maybe something wrong, but I doubt that.
I gave them all $5.
Oh, okay. It works.
Larry's company provides, pays for the signs. They provide money for us to give small token checks for the winners. And they pay for the goodies that you ate outside. So I just wanted to make sure I recognized him and thanked him for that. So. So our first presentation, and John Alita is going to help us out with this, is special recognition to Chris Wetstein and his team, San Bruno firefighters, Sears Corporation, PG&E volunteers, and Rebuilding Together Peninsula. So, as you can read, Rebuilding Together Peninsula is a nonprofit organization with the goals of rebuilding the homes and lives of the nation's most vulnerable homeowners and families at no cost to those served. Rebuilding Together also tackles buildings that serve the community in some significant way, but have no or limited means to repair and maintain. Their work extends beyond the four walls of a home to impact the health and vibrancy of entire communities. One of this year's projects was to refurbish the American Legion Hall at 757 San Mateo Avenue. Two months, two months. Preparation work was necessary prior to the build day due to the extensive list of needed repairs. The final phase of work began on April 27th when members of the San Bruno Fire Department teamed up with PG&E volunteers, and I understand there was over 30 of them, to complete the upgrades and remodels. And I'd like you to welcome Chris Wetstein. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is. He was the team leader. He got the rest of the firefighters involved and enthused. And this is the power presentation that he put together. Well, I edited it a little bit. But he put it together that included the pre-work, the day of the work, and the after photos. So I'd like him to come and narrate that.
Thank you for having us. And on behalf of San Bruno firefighters, we'd like to thank everyone for showing up tonight, city council members, mayor, vice mayor. On April 27th of this year, we worked on a project at Rebuilding Together, sponsored by Rebuilding Together and Sears and PG&E as well. It took a few months to get all the work done, but it was successfully completed through all the hard work and through all the volunteers who showed up that day. So we'd like to thank all of you. Some of the tasks completed. So there's a lot of work that needed to get done. We started on the inside. We had to do new sheet rock on the interior walls plus paint. We did a bunch of electrical upgrades to make sure it was safe to the fire code. We did some roof repair because of the back of the building. It had some sinking in the foundation, which still needs to be addressed due to financial, they're trying to come up with the money to fix that. So that's still going on. But we did some kitchen and bathrooms. New dishwasher donated and installed by Sears. Interior entryway was remodeled and sheet rocked. Exterior of the building was painted. Thanks to our PG&E volunteers, they showed up in force. There's about 30-plus PG&E volunteers who showed up on the build day strictly just to be the paint team and paint the exterior of the building. Reconstruction of the exterior ramp. New redwood handrails built along the exterior of the ramp. Thanks to my dad, Jim Wetstein, who was here tonight as well. New flagpole was donated and installed. Exterior shed and handrails were painted to the rear of the building. Kitchen cabinet doors were in much needed restoration. So we took those off, refinished them, and painted them. We had some new landscaping done to the front of the building with some new grass and plants. And some hardwood floors were refinished in the interior. So before the build day, like we said earlier, it took a couple months. But this is what it looked like. I'm sure some of you recognize it doesn't look like that anymore. As you notice, the old yellow paint, the old flagpole, which was ready to fall down, and a bunch of other remodels, new grass in the front. If you notice, if you look at the front entryway, there are some metal rails. Those were all redone too with new redwood rails. And there's just another, that's all right, there's a flagpole. Picture to the left is a shed that we ended up painting and cleaning up. And then the picture to the right is just the front of the entrance, what it used to look like. It doesn't look like that anymore. Just a picture of the rear of the building, those rails were all painted, plus the exterior as well. And then this is the part of where the foundation in the rear of the building is actually sinking into the ground. Right now, they're looking for the funds to go ahead and fix that part. So we also had some roof leaks because of that. So we temporarily were able to put a Band-Aid on it and fix it. Interior of the structure. This is the old wood, lath and plaster construction. So we basically ripped all that out and put brand-new sheet rock all the way around on all four walls. Another picture of the lath and plaster construction. This is the picture of the kitchen. We had some of the plastic coming off some of the cabinet doors. So we peeled all of it off and sanded it, painted it, and called it good. There's a picture of the entryway. It doesn't look like that anymore. It's all brand-new sheet rock. It's all painted white. And there's also a little bit of, they had a little bit of a mold issue in one of the entrance doors to the back of the building. So that was cleaned up as well. This is a picture of a couple of our veterans. So here's one of the prep days and workdays. You can go ahead and skip that one. So this was the actual build day where we had Sears and PG&E. Sears showed up also on a separate day as well. But this is the day when PG&E came. And this was just our morning briefing just before we started the project. So this right here was when we reconstructed the rampway. They had a handicap ramp, but it wasn't usable. It was out of service and dangerous. So we had a company come in and they went ahead and demolitioned all of it. And then we went to proceed to go ahead and, you see all the forms built here. My dad was a huge help on this project. He actually ran across the street where Caltrans is doing a bunch of work on the train, the train station and all the reconstruction that they're doing over there. So he was able to talk to one of the Caltrans workers and they donated all that rebar that you see right there and helped us with the forms as well. So there's some of the workers. I have to bring out my piece of paper. I apologize because there's a lot of people to thank for this project. But these gentlemen in particular from Albany's Construction, Phil and Joseph Albany, they went ahead and they didn't charge anything for the labor. They did the entire rampway for free. There's the pole that was donated and installed. And there's the finishing touch of the ramp. And then also the front stairway as well was cleaned up. There's just a picture of us. So this was the build day right here when PG&E went ahead and they broke ground and did a really good job painting the structure. It took all day with all 30 of them going all the way around the structure on ladders, on the rooftops, and painted the whole structure for us while we had volunteers on the inside doing all the inside work. Oh, I apologize. So that is my fiancee, Katie Plyer. To the right. She helped out quite a bit on this project. What's that? It was her birthday, actually, yes. So one of the gentlemen I'd like to thank who's also here tonight, Dave Stagnaro, was a huge helper in this whole project. He's done sheet rocking for many years. He's actually standing back there. He's trying to hide. But his nickname's Rocco. But he did all the sheet rock in the entire building all by himself. He's very stubborn and he wouldn't let anyone help him. But he did all that work for us. There he is at work. And there's all the sheet rock. And there he is. And then another person we'd like to thank too, Holly Nelson, firefighter engineer paramedic. She's also in the back as well. Holly served as our volunteer construction, volunteer captain. She helped us round up the troops from College of San Mateo, fire students, and helped me coordinate with all the logistics that needed to get done. There's some CSM fire students just doing some work on the front entryway. And there's Captain Mike Kennedy, who was also an asset to the project as well. Firefighter Joe Perna. And we had a lot of firefighters off duty for two months prior to this project, spending many hours working on this. They get off duty, they go there and do three, four, or five hours at a time. Come in every other day helping out. It was a long, extensive project. But I emphasize that it was a lot of help from the fire department who was able to make this successful. This was also some cabinets I said in the kitchen were getting painted and redone. Some of the interior work. We also have firefighters Brandon Kohler, Ben Minkin, and firefighter Priolo as well. And then this is some of the exterior work. We had to go ahead and prep it for new topsoil and new grass. So we had to also level it out. That was a project that took a couple days as well. And then here's us at the end of the project, kind of cleaning up all of our mess over the two months of basically renovating and taking over the whole American Legion Hall. And we all want to thank the American Legion veterans who were outstanding, letting us come there at odd hours of the day and night to let us do all of our work. And they also shut down operation when they could have been renting out the hall. But they let us do all of our work and they shut it down for us. So after the work was done, just some final pictures. Sorry I'm dragging along here. But there it is. So what you're looking at now is all the new sheet rock, new paint. The hardwood floor was also refinished as well. There's just another angle of it. New handrails. These are the bathrooms, which Irene O'Connell was nice enough to help out with. She did paint that one. So she did a fabulous job. There's our kitchen with the new cabinet doors cleaned up, painted. And then there's the front of the door, front of the American Legion Hall. Looks very different from the first picture we showed. My dad was actually the one who picked out the red, white, and blue and convinced the veterans to go ahead and choose those colors. It was pretty easy to do and well-appropriate as well. There's the new flagpole, the new ramp. Basically one side of the building. What you don't see in that picture and this picture as well is the new redwood handrails. We didn't do that until the Sears came back about three weeks later. So if you want to see it, you can drive by. It looks great. And then there's the handrails, like I said, we painted, rear of the structure. And then at the end of it, the veterans were pretty excited when they first saw it. So they decided to go ahead and this was the first day that they raised their new flag with their new flagpole at the end of the project. And there's the before and after picture on the last slide right there. And just so I don't forget, there's some other names I'd like to recognize as well. Shauna O'Shaughnessy is also here from Rebuilding Together Peninsula, who was a huge help. Roger Hops, Adam Widmer, Randy Knight, Carrie Chang. Patty Larson from PG&E was a huge help in getting all the volunteers from PG&E to come out and help me coordinate it. Patrick Rodriguez, who's also here today from Sears. And also the American Legion vets. And a thank you to all them for all their support and their service to this country.
Cities always like to give out proclamations and recognition. And we have some proclamations to give out to various people that Chris mentioned. So when I call your group, would you please come and get this? So this is for, or send a representative. This is for the American Legion Post 409. And this is for your efforts in restoring and beautifying the American Legion. And by making these efforts, you have enhanced the quality of life for our residents, workers, and visitors. I gave him the wrong one. I'm sorry. We have to swag away from here. I'll make a special trip. This one is to Rebuilding Together. So we'd like you to come and if you'd like to say something about your organization.
Good evening, everyone. So Chris did a wonderful job explaining the project. But what it really shows is what Rebuilding Together does is allow people to come together. It provides the place for community to come together and give back. And this truly was a heartwarming, amazing project. We were able to bring together the public sector, the firefighters, the private sector, PG&E and Sears, and then the nonprofit sector, Rebuilding Together. And then we were able to work with a wonderful group of vets and honor the work that they have, the service that they gave to our community. I am going to do one little plug. We are accepting applications right now. So for both homeowners and other nonprofits. So apply and you probably won't get this, but definitely apply. So thank you so much for the opportunity to be a part of your community and just help make things happen. Yes, you can go online, rebuildingtogetherpeninsula.org. RebuildingTogetherPeninsula.org.
Next, we have for the San Bruno Firefighters Association. So I understand the president is here. Sean, would you come up, please?
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Wasn't expecting to do this tonight, so thank you.
I've been told I shouldn't surprise people by asking them to speak, but what the heck. This is for PG&E. And I just understand we have a representative from PG&E? Okay. Scott, would you like to say something?
Thank you very much, Council, City of San Bruno. I'd like to thank our partner, Rebuilding Together Peninsula and Shauna. And on behalf of the more than 30 volunteers and 20,000 PG&Eers, we'd like to thank you and we'd love to continue to be a good partner with the city of San Bruno. Thank you.
The next one is for Sears. And I believe we have a representative, Patrick. I was there just one of the days, painting the bathroom. The people there, everybody, the firefighters, the Sears people, the PG&E people, did an amazing job and we really just want to thank you.
Well, I don't have much to say, but I mean, it was a very heartfelt, you know, project that we have. And, you know, I know that everybody that came, we left a lot better after doing that kind of project. So we'll be doing more and we appreciate, you know, our veterans and everything they do for us. Thank you.
Next one, Chris, if you'd like to present this.
So this next award goes to someone who was right beside me the whole time. Was actually the mastermind of the whole operation, but I just took all the credit for it. My dad, Jim Wetstein, who was an asset to the project and donated many hours of service helping out this project, running logistics, running to Home Depot, all the Home Depot runs, and basically doing all the stuff that I couldn't do. So I want to thank you, Dad, for.
Thank you very much for this. It was an absolute honor and pleasure to be involved with Rebuilding Together again this year. And it was really neat building a new friendship with the guys down at the American Legion Hall. And thank you for all you've done. And this was well worth the project to get back.
I mentioned him earlier, our sheet rock guy, AKA Rocco, Dave Stagnaro, who spent a lot of hours on this project as well and was a valuable resource and got us out of a lot of trouble. So I'm going to go ahead and invite him up here as well.
Yes, this was a great thing for me to do. You know, homeboy, San Bruno boy. And I worked a lot of years in the drywall trade. And I was fortunate enough to get out and still have my wits about me a little bit. And so when Chris asked me to help out, it was very good. It was a good thing for me. And met a lot of good American Legion boys over there. And so we've had a lot of fun. And I'd be looking forward to be helping out with the next one. So thanks a lot.
I have one more. And it's my privilege to present this one. And this is for Chris Wetstein. And it always, everyone here, everyone you've seen, everyone you've talked to, everyone you saw on the side, did a fabulous job. We need everyone. But it always takes a leader, someone to start the process, someone to encourage everyone, someone to make it all happen, and that's Chris. So we'd like to thank you and.
This means a lot to me and to the firefighters as well. It's a wonderful project and we look forward to doing the next one next year. Thank you.
We're not quite over, but if the firefighters need to leave, I know that some of them are on duty. So if anyone needs to leave. We have our second half of this, which is the residential part, residential commercial, and another special recognition that we will be giving out too. So some people have to leave. Pardon me? Oh, did you want to say something? I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Please come.
When I first heard about Rebuilding Together, I didn't have a clue what to expect. And as you can imagine, we went from a raw egg to an Easter egg. And our membership has increased, the word has gotten around, our members are getting more active. And I just can't say enough good things about this thing. It's really been beneficial. Step two is coming up real quick, so keep your fingers crossed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We do value you and we're so happy that Rebuilding Together could do what they did for you. Our next part is going to start. Melody Tobin is going to do the, pardon me? I was going to moderate because I trip over my tongue sometimes. And we'll get started.
Good evening. I'm going to start the residential awards. And we thank everybody for joining us. We are going to start with the single-family residence. And this is on curb appeal. So let me explain, the beautification award program is designed to recognize the efforts of residents, businesses, and public entities to improve the physical appearance of our community. The focus is on exteriors that require a significant commitment on the part of the property owner or renter. Commercial, 496 San Mateo Avenue. So this is the winner of our commercial. And it is Party for Less. And are they here this evening? Thank you. And did you want to say something?
I did want to say thank you very much for this and thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Party for Less is at 496 San Mateo Avenue. And we appreciate you bringing some beautification to the avenue. We appreciate all your good business. Thank you. And secondly, apartment building, we'd like to recognize Park Plaza at 2081 Whitman Way. And I know you are here this evening. Is there a certificate for you? Would you like to?
No.
Do you want to say anything?
I would like to say something. This was nominated by a resident who noticed how much, and John is going to do the next couple of slides, how much improvement there was in the landscaping, new trees were planted, the place, the whole place was painted. And he just wanted to make sure that the Park Plaza people knew that the neighborhood notices when you make improvements like that, and so do we. So thank you.
Okay, on to single-family residence, and this is for curb appeal. This is recognition? This is recognition. Okay, so we're on recognition. These are the addresses that were nominated by fellow residents. 940 Hensley Avenue. 945 Green Avenue. 470 Euclid Avenue. 657 Easton Avenue. 509 Third Avenue. And 178 Georgia Avenue, one-third prize. 528 Third Avenue is our second-place winner. And our first-place winner is 698 Easton Avenue. Is, I'm sorry, going back, our 528 Third Avenue, are you here with us this evening? Guillermo Quan? No? We have a certificate and a check for them and we'll go ahead and mail that. And our first place in single-family residence curb appeal is 178... What? No, you're saying no to me. That was second place.
We're sorry, we're having a little technical glitch here.
Okay, I'm sorry. So third place, single-family residence is 178 Georgia Avenue. Are you with us this evening? Thank you. Be very happy to last you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you very much for this. I like to keep my house beautiful again. I mean, I've been here for 11 years, so I like to keep it nice for, that way I can my neighbors look at them and see they can do the same thing. Thank you so much.
We agree. Keeping your house beautiful encourages your neighbors to keep up their residence. Okay. So second, we did second. So first place, 698 Easton Avenue. And that is Alberto and Maria Paredes. Are you with us this evening? 698 Easton Avenue. They have one first place in this category. We'll be mailing them a check, a frame certificate, and a sign for their yard so they can display for all their neighbors to see and help encourage their neighbors to keep up their curb appeal as well. So we're going to move on to improved residential property. And for this category, we have before and after pictures.
This came to me, a picture like this, with a little note that said, "This is the before of 575 Cedar Avenue." And I'm looking at it going, it's a car and a man, so I don't know where the cedar is. But if you look on the back left, which John is going to point out with a cursor, that's the before of cedar. And then now you'll see the after of cedar.
So 575 Cedar Avenue. And unfortunately, they couldn't be here due to a family emergency, but we have one of the neighbors here this evening to accept on their behalf.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud. Well, I'd like to say thank you very much. And they've lived there for 36 years and they've been very good neighbors. And I know they're going to keep this and this is going to be something of value. Thank you.
And thank you for coming this evening to accept on their behalf. And then first place and most improved is 1620 Hickory Avenue. Alan Bu? Alan Bu? Great, thank you. Did you want to say something?
Thank you very much for the rewarding and thank you for the inviting. Thank you very much.
And Alan, did you have anything you wanted to say about your residence? We have, do we, Miriam, do we have the microphone? Tell us, yes, tell us about your improvements and what you did and how you managed to make your homes so beautiful.
I'm really surprised. I can't believe that I'm being invited to here tonight. And while it's just like out of my mind that I never believed that I will get an award for remodel of my home. However, this is a prize really valuable of my life. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Alan. We're proud as well to have you as a member of our community and to have you care so much about how your house looks in your neighborhood. So we really appreciate your involvement and what you've done. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to zerscaping. Zerscaping is low-water use and/or drought-tolerant landscaping. And we have several nominations. And again, the nominations are made by your fellow citizens of San Bruno and by some of the members of the beautification task force. So let me read the, let me read the description. Thanks. Zerscaping encompasses a wide variety of landscaping choices from attractive use of rocks and gravel, paving stones and statues, to the use of cactus, succulents, and other low-water-use plants or a combination of it all. If you're interested, visit the city's website and learn about Lawn to Be Gone. Lawn to Be Gone is a program that provides rebates to approved customers that convert their water-thirsty lawns to water-efficient landscapes. So the nominations in zerscaping, 624 Easton Avenue. 161 Balboa Way. 820 Angus Avenue. And our third-place winner is 180 Cheryl Drive. And Yacito Batista, are you here? Yes, thank you.
I have to work hard again. Maybe Caroline, you know, tried to nominate me and she's probably tired of looking at me every day, every single day for an hour to fix my front yard. This is a good appreciation for my work. Thank you.
And our second-place winner is 131 Ross Way. Cheryl Corbus. And Juper. Let's have a certificate and a check for you. Would you like to say something?
In behalf of my family, I would like to thank the City of San Bruno Council for giving us this award. It's really our pleasure and we thank you so much for this. Yeah, thank you.
And our first-place winner is 3140 Fasman Drive. So you have a story and I won't even try and pronounce your name, but I'll let you pronounce it.
Okay.
And this is a lifetime resident of San Bruno.
Oh, yeah, born and raised. This is the only, only city that I know. And I'd like to thank everybody for the award and everything. And I'd definitely like to thank my parents who helped me make all the decisions on things that I never thought I ever would. I never knew what Sonoma Williams was. I thought that's where they sold paint, but that's Sherman Williams. I don't know anything about molding or anything like that, but my parents helped me with everything and I'd like to thank them and obviously all you guys for nominating.
So again, the first-place winners receive a sign to proudly display on your lawn that was donated by Prudential Realty, a frame certificate, and then a check which is also donated by Prudential Realty. We appreciate Larry Franzell and his group for being such a good partner with us and helped the city to recognize our citizens who've done such great work in their community, their lawns, their front yards. So we're going to move on. I know, did you want to do this by line? So before we wrap up, we have a special recognition to Skyline College. Skyline College Public Art Program.
Did you have some? I'll let you do this. Sorry, we didn't have time to coordinate this. Usually we do a smoother job. I went up to Skyline College and walked around. I was, happened to run into the vice president, actually, and he escorted me to several places. And the next 11 slides show you a variety of new public art that is in, at the college. And if you stroll around the grounds, you'll see what's here. It's fabulous. This is a huge mural. It's maybe 15 feet by, I don't know, 12 feet. It's all done on tile. This, oh, could you stop a second, John? I want, take a close look at this and then, John, would you do the next slide? And that's where it is. I first saw it and I'm looking and I go, that has to be 3D, right? I mean, it has to be real. No, it's flat. It's a flat painting on the wall. I was amazed. John, could you go back again? So doesn't that look real? Anyway, so that was that. Then there's, this was in between a set of their buildings, this little yard, and they have the sculptures and the landscaping, which is lovely. And mural, this one's an older one, but I thought I should include it because it's gorgeous. And there's a couple other murals. Very vibrant, even after several years that they've been up. And I included this one because not only do they have the public art that we, things that we recognize as artwork, but their landscaping, their tile work, the cement work, it all has a balance, it all is artistically done. So I wanted to make sure we put that there. I know we have a representative, I believe we have the president, do we not, of Skyline College? And I'd like to present her with this. We don't have a check, but I got my property tax bill today. So you'd be getting something, yeah. But we would like to recognize Skyline College and their efforts at public art. So if you'd like to say something?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Yes, we get your checks every day, so thank you. First of all, I would just like to say to the Honorable Mayor Jim Ruhain and the members of the city council and members on the dais here and guests, colleagues. On behalf of the San Mateo County Community College Board of Trustees and Chancellor Ron Galatolo, the esteemed faculty and staff and students at Skyline College, I really want to thank you for taking notice and providing this award to Skyline College. I feel like I'm kind of at a Skyline College meeting, quite frankly, because I see a lot of friends and loved ones in the audience here, members of the president's council that help keep us connected to the committee, to the community. But I do want to also acknowledge that we actually have, you saw some pictures there of the art. And there are some people on campus that are responsible for having the forethought and the foresight to really make sure that as we're doing the modernization of the campus, that we include the aesthetics as well and we include the arts. Because it is the kind of space and place that the community deserves to have access to. So I want to acknowledge some people that are here in the audience here with me. First of all, the leadership of Vice Chancellor Jose Nunez as the Vice Chancellor of Facilities, Operations, Maintenance, Maintenance and Operations is, has just been phenomenal. And representing him is the Director of Maintenance, Karen Powell, here. And that's because we have that, we have that district support. And then on the campus, the person responsible for the administration of the facilities is the Vice President Eloisa Briones, who is here in the front. And then there's the people who do the real work with regard to the art, and that's the art faculty and staff. And they're led by the Dean of Social Science and Creative Arts, Donna Bescott. And Donna leads an Art on Campus Committee as well. But I also want to point out the esteemed faculty that we have here from the art department. We have Ellen Lorenstein, who's here, Bridget Fisher, who runs the art gallery, Paul Bradenbauer, who is one of the, who is the artist of two of those murals that you saw on those pictures, and Amir Estvahani, who is a new faculty member here. So on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for the opportunity to receive this award.
Well, thank you for attending. That concludes our presentation for today. And I believe the mayor's going to call for a break.
First of all, thank you, Irene, for initiating this beautification task force many years ago, and all of your committee and all the recipients. ago, and all of your committee, and all the recipients. It's a, it's a great city, and it's fun to, it's fun to have fun once in a while. So, thank you very, very much. We're going to take a five-minute break and let you go. Look at your checks and enjoy your plaques.
And you can talk to Larry and say, maybe next year, they should be a little bigger. Next year, they should be a little bigger.
Good evening, like to call the meeting back to order. Item number five, review of the agenda. Any changes? Okay, item number six, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on September 24th, 2013, any errors, corrections, omissions? Seeing then they'll be filed as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion second on question. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings. We don't have any public hearings this evening. Item number nine, is public comment an item not on this agenda? Is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate? The ground act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda as pursued state law. Would anyone like to address the council under public comment?
Robert Rico, speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, I just want to thank the council members and the various city staff that showed up last Sunday for our legislative day and remind you that this coming Sunday, we'll have the four city council candidates. We'll each have their own booths, so you can stop by and talk to each of them or all of them. And the following Sunday on the 20th, we'll have the four candidates applying for three positions for the San Bruno Park School District Board, so we hope to see you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Marty Medina, Garden Avenue, city council candidate. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council, staff, guests. I'm here tonight to correct some information from the Legal Women's Voters Candidate Forum last Wednesday night. The issue was the safety of PVC pipe in drinking water systems. I am hoping by now, you know I am a city of San Bruno Council candidate, and I am focused in lowering San Bruno's water and sewer rates. I have suggested that PVC pipe, C-900 class, can be used as an alternative to ductile iron pipe. During the meeting, one of the council members said PVC pipe was unsafe, and I am here to correct that. I will provide this information to our clerk, and she can share it with you, or I can also send everybody an email. This is from the PVC Pipe Association, and I'm going to read a few things from it. PVC pipe meets or exceeds all required health and safety standards and regulations governed by the U.S. and Canadian Safe Water Drinking Acts. It is approved around the world in water distribution and transmission lines. Over 40,000 North American water utilities use PVC pipe today, and more than 1 million miles are in service, or about 78 percent of all new drinking water distribution pipes installed on the continent. So PVC pipe can be used as a transmission pipe in our water system, and it's safe. So that is correcting what was said the other night. The second thing I want to talk about tonight is I wanted to thank the council for providing the information regarding the $653,000 in uncollected fees in our water and sewer rates at the last council meeting. This is another way, if we were to collect these monies that are owed to us, that we could lower our water and sewer rates. If we're collecting what is owed to us, we don't have to raise the water rates for everybody else. The money that comes in should go into the system, and we could protect our rate payers. One alternative to this would require a larger deposit for somebody that opens a water or sewer account in the city. Another alternative could require the property owner to pay for the account in the event that a previous tenant left the city without paying. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, item 10, conduct of business. We're going to conduct a study session to review the fiscal year 2013-2018 Capital Improvement Program and fiscal year 2013-14 Capital Improvements Program budget.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for taking us up on our request to convert your regular city council meeting to a study session format. We encourage you to sit down on the ground in this format in order to, we hope, encourage your discussion. You have in front of you tonight the important topic of a review, no action is proposed tonight, but your review of the capital improvement program for fiscal years 13 through 18, and the capital improvement program budget for the one-year fiscal 13-14, current fiscal year. You have the budget previously distributed in front of you tonight, and you'll note that, as has been the case in the past, the program is divided into topic areas and a variety of different projects. I believe approximately 70 projects in total are identified in the budget for your consideration. In order to make efficient use of your time tonight, and to focus on some of the issues that we consider to be most noteworthy, our presentation tonight will provide a high-level overview of the types of projects that are envisioned for completion in each of the section areas, for example, within the wastewater enterprise, within the water enterprise, within the parks and facilities category. And we have assembled, actually as I look around the room, a fairly large group of staff who will be presenting to you a few selected projects with a little bit more detail to give you some information about some of the project areas that will be important in the coming year's work program. It's not our intent to try and prioritize projects in this manner, but simply to give you a little bit of a snapshot, to whet your appetite, if you will, to some of the things that are in the budget document that you have in front of you. And as always, we are interested and eager to take your questions and to encourage your discussion. As I mentioned, the budget is not presented tonight for your consideration of approval. Depending on the pace and your appetite for consideration of the budget for approval, we would bring that back at either your next meeting or a subsequent meeting, depending on how much of the review we're actually able to complete tonight. So I would encourage you to ask questions or to ask for any information that would be useful to your understanding about any of the projects. We'll briefly review projects that have been completed during the previous year and have been eliminated from the budget because they're completed. And we will also identify in a quick list format those projects that are newly added to this budget that have not been previously included in our capital improvement program. One of the other things that we're going to do tonight is to provide you with a quick update review of, now that we have completed one year, one complete year of collection of water and wastewater rates under the new five-year rate program that was put into effect by the city council in spring of 2012, effective July of 2012. The council will certainly recall that at the time of the rate program approval, you asked that we provide you an update at the earliest possible time about revenues and expenditures in the enterprises, so that you could consider how the rate increase program comports with the necessary expenditures that are being made through the enterprise, both in the operating fund as well as in the capital fund program. So we'll be providing you that first snapshot update tonight, now that we have completed one full year of revenue collection under the new rate program. Again, staff stands ready to answer your questions or provide any additional information that you may want. I'm going to ask our finance director, Kim Jerron, to give a quick overview of some of the high-level topic areas and also the financial perspective, and then we'll work through the book with presentations by a number of different staff on some of the selected
So just very quickly, the slides behind me, just walk through a list of the completed projects during the course of the past fiscal year. I won't name them off, and everybody has handouts that walk through those. We also have a slide that just highlights the CIP projects in progress already. Many of these projects have already had city council action as of recent for award of contracts for design or construction, so just a few handful of those are up on the slide behind me. And then finally, just moving to highlight the new projects in the budget, you will see that there are quite a few new projects. When I say new projects, those are projects appearing for the first time in the five-year work program. Not all of these projects are requesting funding in the current year, but are appearing for the first time in the five-year work program, and so some of these will be highlighted later on this evening. So moving into the finances, I'm just going to provide a quick overview of the financial information. The five-year work program identifies 57 projects for a total of $159 million in necessary capital improvements to city facilities and infrastructure. Of this amount, $93 million of it is to fund critical system improvements to the city's water and wastewater systems, and then another $16 million is dedicated to the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. The 2013-14 Capital Improvement Program budget totals $50 million, with $24 million in carryover appropriations, and $26 million in new funding requests. For the new funding requests, there are several significant high-dollar projects that are included in this amount, which include the Advanced Water Meter Infrastructure Project at a cost of $5.1 million, the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Project at $12 million for the current year, and construction of the College Water Pump Station at $3.4 million, Olympic Sewer Pump Station at $3 million, and the replacement of Well 15 at $3 million as well. These five projects account for more than half of the 2013-14 budget request amount. Just to provide a quick overview of funding sources, if you look at page 14 of the proposed CIP budget, you will find a summary of the sources of funding for the CIP program. It lists a total of 36 different funding sources, which are incorporated into the work program. Many of these funding sources are restricted funds, including enterprise revenues, grants, and transportation funding. That said, a significant portion of the proposed work program has no dedicated funding source, and instead requires the use of some of the city's undesignated funding sources. This includes the use of the General Fund Equipment Reserve at an amount of $470,000, the Building and Facilities Fund at an amount of $136,000, the One-Time Revenue Fund at $859,000, and the Technology Fund at $40,000. I would just note that the One-Time Revenue Fund, that staff is anticipating that there will be sufficient one-time revenues during the course of the current fiscal year to fund the proposed projects and this dollar amount. Even with the proposed use of these unrestricted funding sources, at the amount shown, the city's reserve funds will remain funded at the levels as determined by the city council with the adoption of the reserve policy in January 2013. That includes that $5 million Capital Improvement Program Reserve Fund, which is not proposed for use in this current CIP program budget, to allow further discussion by the city council for the appropriate use of those funds. So those funds are not being programmed into this budget this evening. The $5 million does remain in that fund, however, we've identified different funding sources for the proposed budget. So that said, we're going to move into the first section of the budget this evening, which is the Technology Capital Improvement Program. And this includes projects to upgrade and improve the city's technology infrastructure. As you will hear this evening from the individual project presentations, there are some recurring themes that emerge when discussing these technology initiatives. One of those themes is increased efficiency, which efficiency allows us to do more, but not necessarily always with less. What we find with efficiency is that sometimes technology makes us more efficient on the surface, but behind the scenes, there's additional work that is required. So there's a give and take on that one. However, on the surface, all of these items do help improve efficiency. It also allows this to, the ability to improve services to the public and information available to the public through the use of technology. Technology also allows us to centralize information in one place, where all departments in the public are accessing the same information from the same source. And the investment in technology has somewhat become a mandate for all businesses. People are expected, expect to be able to access services and conduct routine city business from their computer at home or from their mobile device. And so many of these upgrades that are proposed this evening will move the city in the direction to enabling that type of business to be conducted. So that said, I will hand it over to Eric Jackson, our IT manager, to give an overview of the first project.
Thank you, Kim. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I will present two of the technology capital programs tonight. The first being our Geographic Information System, or GIS, upgrade. So GIS is actually information, and within the GIS world, they call it assets. So over five years ago, the city's digital information was spread out, it was duplicated in many areas, and not efficiently shared. And to tackle this problem, the city laid out the groundwork or the foundation for a full GIS system. And in 2011, a central location for all of the digital information was created. So with this proposed project, the city has the opportunity to expand the system and to provide the public with new opportunities to use this information or our assets that we've collected and centralized. So again, what exactly are assets? It's more than a bunch of photos taken from outer space and a collection of maps. Assets can actually be physical, or they can be soft assets. A couple of examples I could give you to make it easier to understand how the assets work together would be maybe an honor of Arbor Day, a city-owned tree. That's considered a hard asset. A soft asset would be a pruning history of that tree, sidewalk repair, age, or the health of that tree. Those are soft assets, they're all interrelated. Another example would be a water meter, a hard asset, it's a physical asset, but the soft asset could be the water meter location, usage history, maintenance history, customer information and customer billing information, again, all interrelated. I'll give one more example, maybe a city facility. Specific example would be a recreation rental location. That would be the physical asset, but the soft asset could be the hours of operation. It could be a Google View map or view or virtual tour of that location. So there are different types of assets, hard, there are soft assets, but they all are interrelated. Basically, anything that you can digitize, any type of information would be considered an asset. So the proposed upgrade would give us, again, the opportunity to write the following to the public. What we don't, one of the issues that we have now, or maybe not an issue, but a concern, is we don't have an efficient way for the public to submit online forms. We do have online forms, but there's, most of the forms, you have to, you can fill them out online, but you have to print them out and fax them in, or bring them into City Hall. This upgrade would create a full citizen request form, for instance graffiti, it could be potholes, a tree pruning, that they can fill out and submit online. To assist the public with this, these forms, they can go to the portal on the website, which we'll discuss later, and find the location of the graffiti or the pothole on a map, click on that map, and then submit a form that way. Saves time, it's easy for the public to do this, and it's not very difficult to implement this in our first phase of the project. Another concern that we have, and GIS will address, is the fact that there are no emergency shelter locations, flood or earthquake zone information, or street maps really available to the public in the event of a disaster or a city emergency. Nor do we have the capability to implement group alerts via email or phone to specific areas of the city in the event of an emergency or shelter-in-place order. So the project plan is to have a section of the website with information links and interactive maps, I'm sorry, to this information to support, and support staff, and support staff will have easy-to-use tools to add information during an emergency. One of the issues we faced was getting information to the website in a timely basis during the Glenview disaster, and we want to address these concerns and issues with this project. Another area of concern would be access to public events. Various types of information can be submitted to the city, and we can upload this information to the GIS system for public access. An example could be such as what South San Francisco has, a citywide yearly garage sale. We can upload information, this type of information, to our website for public access, and they can download information to where the different garage sales are. Another example would be tonight, the beautification awards. We could have links to the different homes with photographs to show the different award winners and what they've actually done with the property to get the award. Another example could be the use of GIS for public works construction projects. If there's going to be a street closure or any type of issue that might affect the public, that could be readily available on the website and alert them to any issues that might be occurring. And again, I mentioned earlier, virtual tours. We know that in recreation on the website, it's a great website, but they have more of a description for the rental facilities. Using free tools from Google, they could click on the facility, they can see an actual view of the picnic ground, the hall, or anything that's going to be rented, and they can make a better determination if that's going to suit their needs. Also, there's no portal or no information for the public in terms of APN or parcel or property information. That's something we can implement very easily, very quickly for the public. And one other example I could give would be the existing restaurant guide that we have on the website. It's not interactive, and we can use GIS to make that interactive. You can click on the actual business, you can go to their website, we can link it in very different ways. Again, these are things that can enhance the public access to city information. But not only for the public, but the staff will reap some of the benefits, or many of the benefits, for GIS. One thing that we've noticed is that when we obtain information, staff obtain information, it's done in a variety of ways. It could be handwritten, it could be on a tablet, it could be written on a spreadsheet, and a lot of times, this information must be inputted into GIS. So we want to enable field personnel to input data directly into GIS and bypass all the other methods and save time. One other benefit to staff, and it goes back to the Glenview incident, is that the ability to print maps. We had a difficult time printing maps during that time. We will roll out very simple-to-use tools so that all staff will be able to print data or information, or maps, or reports, or charts from the data that we have in GIS. Again, GIS can be very cumbersome, and we want to install those tools to make it easy for all staff to access information if they have the proper permissions and use the data, not just a select few of people. So again, these are just a few of the opportunities that are available with the upgrade. And many of these opportunities mentioned will rely on the website upgrade, which I'll speak about next. And also, you can see, this is going to be a multi-year commitment, not only in resources, but also in funding. But it takes time to get where we need to go, and we have so much information that we can, we can digitize, we can make available to the public. It's going to be an ongoing project, and hopefully a very rewarding one for the city. Thank you.
Is all this information, to be able to be friendly on this also?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay. I'll move on to the next up, the second project, which is the website upgrade. So this site will upgrade the city's official website, sanbruno.ca.gov. We rolled this website out in 1998, believe it or not, and our last upgrade was in 2008, and that was more of a facelift. And since that time, websites have transitioned themselves to more of just an information tool, to a critical customer service tool that enables visitors to access city services and conduct business. So the project would upgrade and enhance the website to, as I mentioned here, a business and information center. That pretty much says it all. So by doing that, we wish to address a few concerns or issues we have with the existing website, public facing, and that is our, to improve our e-commerce capabilities. Right now, we have a limited capability for online payments, building permit applications, event registration, and so forth. So we want to, again, enhance our e-commerce so they can, they can do all those services one-stop. And again, not print out, fill out the form online, print it out, walk it into City Hall. We want it to be a virtual City Hall as much as possible, and we can do that with the technology that we have. More fillable forms online. A lot of information we have are static, they're not fillable, they're documents that are not, don't have forms that you can actually fill out, so we want to add more forms so that the public can have everything they need, all the tools they need, all the forms necessary to, again, make this more of a service website, instead of just an informational website. One category that we wanted to really enhance would be just the public access to the site. One issue that's coming up is the ADA, Section 508, the American Disabilities Act. There are so many requirements now for websites, and we are pretty far behind at this point. We need to make sure that our website is ADA compliant and accessible to anyone with disabilities. That's one of the major concerns that we have now. Navigation can also be a problem, difficult to find things. With optimized search engine capabilities, we want to make sure that if you search a word, certain word, it's going to find it on our website and not take you to some other website. It's going to be specific to the San Bruno website. Functionality, smartphones, tablets. As you know, when you go to some websites on your tablet or your smartphone, you can barely see it. We need to optimize the website. We will optimize the website, if this project is approved, for smartphones and tablets, all mobile devices. The city calendar, while it gives you information, you can't search. Every once in a while, it's difficult to find a certain type of meeting. That's something else that we have to address. And also, social media integration. Although we have a few department Facebook accounts, we have no active official city of San Bruno media page. That's something we want to address. Additional features we want to implement, and this is more tailored to the staff, is roll out an Intranet, which will encompass information that city employees would like to get. Sometimes they have to wait until the City Hall is open. We want to make sure the information is available 24/7 for those who work different shifts, fire, public safety, police, those are, those different employees. So in the funding, last year, we did fund, or we did budget $30,000 in research of what other municipalities have paid. We did have to increase the funding to reach the service levels that we want and that are required, that the public probably expects of us. And closing with this project, we do have the opportunity to greatly enhance our public service by providing these new online resources and services. So that's the website upgrade project plan, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Will you be going through some stages as far as how you're going to enhance, and so we can see the progression of that?
Right.
Or are you just going to unveil it?
No, no, it won't be done in a vacuum. We plan to reactivate the web subcommittee, and hopefully have different members of maybe the council and department, department heads on that. And we've also considered having a member of the public on that committee to make sure we are addressing all different types of service levels.
Okay, yeah. Because I mean, I saw your multimedia capability. Because I mean, I saw your multimedia capabilities box there, and I go, we need change pictures, we need to be able to show videos and things, and be able to click here and there as soon as, you know, that page comes up. So, I'm hoping we're going in that direction.
We are, we are. And in this plan, I built in a little bit of capacity even before the project is approved, sorry. We updated, we upgraded our firewall, and I got a firewall that could handle increased bandwidth and dedicated bandwidth to the website.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chair. I would encourage, as far as the website residents, because I think you'll get a different perspective and insight from those looking at it from outside in, navigating. So, I would encourage that when that group meets. It's in here as far as the CMMS system within part of this, and I know it goes into other departments, so I'll save that for when it comes up on another department, but thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Just one comment, both on the website project and the GIS project. I think the capabilities that you're proposing are definitely favorable and will be an asset to the city, but I'm also concerned about the amount of training and the availability of personnel to maintain these things, especially when you start talking about having these social media outlets activated through the web. It does require a lot of interaction, a lot of human interaction to keep those things current, or they become obsolete. And so, as we think this through, I think we need to also consider what the operational cost is going to be ongoing for the personnel and the training upfront to make sure that people know how to do it, know what's appropriate to post, and are available to post that on a regular basis so that it stays meaningful.
Right, I agree. That would be part of our content management section of the website development. Who's in charge of what, what can be posted. It will take additional resources. In terms of updating the website, once we get the website up and running, we will probably update the way we're doing that now, which each, there's a representative in each department, a web committee member that does the updates. And then, Information Technology Division, we upload the final copy to the main site. And GIS, the same concern, or the same, we have factored, and again, it's a multi-year project. We factored in data development costs into that, training costs also. And again, one of the tools we want to use with the GIS is a tool that, again, will make it easy for staff to access and enter information, so those costs were factored in.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. The Department maintains all data related to police services in San Bruno in a records management database. Information contained in this system is also sent electronically to officers in the field via the Department's computer automated dispatch. These two systems are linked to one another, and they also connect to criminal justice databases that we use to provide law enforcement service to the community. Our current system's 13 years old. It has limited search and data entry capability, and this requires a significant amount of staff time to provide data entry into this system. Additionally, this system is reaching the end of its storage capacity. The Department is proposing replacement of the existing CAD, or Computer Automated Dispatch, and RMS, Records Management System, with a different software vendor, Sunridge RIMS, in order to take advantage of the latest advances in technology. This is also significant for us because we're only one of six agencies in San Mateo County that doesn't have this system. All other agencies in San Mateo County utilize RIMS. There are certain advantages to that, and the main one is it's, the systems talk to one another. So, we can search crime analysis, we can search a suspect vehicle in a robbery against all other databases in San Mateo County. Additionally, the district attorney's offices go into this system. Right now, we physically hand-carry each police report to the DA's office once a day during the weekday. If the DA's office goes to RIMS, which they've announced their intent to do so, agencies would be able to send this data electronically, thereby saving staff time. The RIMS product provides electronic report-writing software. Right now, our officers write the reports on the computers, they print the report, they hand it to the supervisor, the supervisor approves it, and then it's manually entered into the database by records clerks. RIMS product, when the officer writes the report, it automatically populates the field and streamlines police operations. This will free up our staff to do and provide other services for the community. Another real exciting component of the RIMS product is it has a crime reporting tool. So, the public can access a database, and the public can find out what's going on in terms of crime or police activity in their neighborhood. So, essentially, going to the RIMS product is, one, out of necessity, because San Mateo County and the compatibility of all San Mateo County law enforcement agencies is significant. It also makes us more efficient, and it also provides and gives the public greater access to what's going on in our neighborhood. So, essentially, that's a brief overview of the product and our request, and I'll be more than happy to take any questions if you have.
Questions of the chief?
I just have, thank you, I just have a question. How soon are we going to be able to put this in?
So, we can, because several agencies are looking at RIMS, it may take up to six months. It could potentially go to a year, but the sooner we can get that through, the sooner it could go on.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, good evening. Eric Jackson and the chief already expanded lots of details, what is the advantage of centralized information and information management? For, I will just spend some time on computerized maintenance management system, and in addition to those advantages provided by the GIS and the data management system, what this specific computerized maintenance system provides. The system provides pre-planned maintenance activities based on pre-established condition of the system. Back in 2000, based on your approval in early 2008, the city started to implement the CMMS system first for our sewer system. Until now, the city spent a total of 250, around $251,000 for the implementation of the system. Right now, the system is up and operates fully in our sewer division. What exactly the city achieved with this investment of up to $251,000, which includes one-time investment and also ongoing operational and maintenance investment in our operating budget since then for licensing and data fees? Right now, our sewer division is able to pre-plan all of the needed maintenance activities based on the condition assessment of each section of the system. Our sewer system has up to 1,900 elements, and just was finished our video inspection for the whole system. Based on the result of that video inspection of each section of mains, then a decision is made how often that section has to be cleaned. And this system will generate work orders on a timely manner, telling the division which section when they need to clean. I asked today our sewer service manager, how you would describe what this investment really provides the city, what the sewer division was able to prevent to happen. And his answer was that in the last few months, if I would not have had this work order generated by this pre-programmed software, I would have had at least 10 more sewer overflow. Specifically, he called out at the intersection of El Camino and San Mateo and on Trenton area, that when, based on the cycle of maintenance, they bend back to clean that specific line, they realized how close that section was to really overflow. That was exactly the right timing for them to go back to clean that line, preventing a possible SSO. That was the only way how the city was able to reduce so substantially our number of SSO in the last few years, really utilizing the capability and the help of this support. No human brain would have been able to really retain all of the information and just to pre-program on daily basis exactly which section of your system needs now to be cleaned. And of course, this really captured the institutional knowledge of everybody and passed the knowledge from generation to generation in our department. In 2012, Mainstar is the provider of these services for the CMMS system. Mainstar, Mainstar no longer provides support for the existing system. They updated their system to a web-based system, which basically is the main difference, that you can access the system remotely, from any remote location. And if the city is not updating to web-based, they are not longer providing this service. That upgrade of our system to a web-based system is included in our proposed CIP budget. Also, what is included in our CIP budget to expand the application of the maintenance program in water also. Our water system even is more complicated than our sewer system. Our water system is pressurized and also produce water and has much more component and elements than our sewer system. In long term, this expansion of this maintenance system really will provide huge benefit, will lower overall cost, will decrease the number of leaks, will minimize the impact on our residents. You can, the city experience many time damage to properties for both, for sewer and water. This really will prevent many of those property damages. The proposed investment in sewer is $52,000, and in water, including one-time and also training cost and licensing fees is $69,000. If this system will be fully implemented, about $18,000 will be the ongoing cost for each, which will include license fee and data fee for an ongoing basis, and possible any system upgrades, which are unknown at this time. I have a very detailed report, I can leave a copy with you, and even now, if you have any more questions, I will be happy to answer.
Any questions for the board? Ken?
So, you mentioned the initial investment. You mentioned $251,000. It shows in the budget roughly $162,000 has been spent. So, that was all, I mean, and I see how you've broken it up over the two funds, but all that money, that initial investment, was maintained just for wastewater use initially? That's what you're using it for now?
Right now, it's used only just for wastewater. Wasn't implemented yet in water, and in long term, will be our intent, and that's why it's shown, the $45,000 later on for stormwater, and then in 2016, '17, then in streets. But right now, it's implemented only just in wastewater.
So, I guess I ask the question, why are we waiting a couple more years for stormwater and streets?
Implementation of this program really require a lot of time. And the reason why even in wastewater took this long was that our GIS database had to be updated to that level when this preventive maintenance system can rely on correct information. And this is the main reason why it took us this long to implement fully in wastewater. Water is in a better position, that water already has a very well-developed, reliable GIS information system for our system, but storm is lagging behind. Storm, our storm system has only just up to about 80% of our system has GIS database. That would be too early to start to implement this program until you don't have enough reliable information, system information itself, garbage in, garbage out. That you really have to have a very strong database to be able to support this kind of preventive program. So.
Mr. Chair. This is one that I've had questions on. This is ones I have had questions on before, was going to come back up. I haven't seen that detailed informational report. I'd like to see that, I'd like to read it and digest it. You know, this was installed in '09, it's been using since 2010, we're going into 2014. We're talking about one division, and my memory, which is, you know, always correct, but is that when we began this project and this investment, it was for all the divisions. One of my questions back then was, why are we at one division, and how come we haven't gone to the others? Until we all get it down in every division, then why do we keep expending more monies, which I keep hearing? So, again, I haven't read that detailed report. I certainly will, I'll go back to my notes. But at this point with the CMMS system, I'm going to repeat what I've said in the past and in the past, as far as implementation, its costs, its ongoing maintenance, where we are at in the various divisions. Because to me, I assumed, maybe wrong, and I can be corrected, is that this would be better along in the various divisions and not just one. So, in essence, from the purchase of '09 into almost 2014, we've basically taken one division and pretty well are saying, I believe, is what you're saying, is we have it down. And now, we think it's also good to continue that, as well as going into the other divisions. And I just am seeing the money, and I'm not seeing the implementation, and I'm not seeing it broad-based through the department.
And councilmember, you are correct. Was the intent initially to implement across all of each division, in essence, managing all of the systems? And our intent was last- And our intent was last year to start the implementation of, the implementation of the system in water was delayed with one year, based on further discussion with you, pending the approval of, your approval for the implementation in water. And also was delayed with one year the implementation of the web-based module for the Mainstar system itself. And was a special agreement actually between us and the service provider to maintain our support for one more year until the city be able to purchase and to implement the web update. I just will emphasize that is a requirement in our bykeeper agreement for the city to maintain a CMMS system for our management of our sewer system. For water, the city facing many legal requirements for reporting requirements for state health department. And this is a very helpful tool for the city in long run to meet all of the best management practices and also the different requirements.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may intercede here for just a moment, I'd like to just give a time check with the city council and suggest that you may want to check in and see where we are, say, in another half hour, and then make a determination about whether you would like to continue through all of the divisions. I have asked each of the staff to try and limit their comments on the individual projects to roughly two minutes each. So that's, this is a reminder to everybody. And we will continue to take your questions. We did spend a little bit of extra time on the technology section because this is a, I'm sure you noticed from previous years, this section is beefed up a little bit with some additional projects and a pretty significant level of expenditure to improve our services, to improve our efficiency. And we wanted to make sure that we gave you the opportunity to understand in a fair amount of detail what we're proposing. Each of these items, again, per our normal practice, we'll come back to the city council for actual consideration of the deployment for those individual purchases that are over twenty-five thousand dollars. So with that, we will-
Can I just comment on that?
Yes, please.
I think the comments that we've been making here, I think we're very much, I mean, I can't speak for all of us, but the comment that no human brain can take care of all this stuff. And so we've bought into the fact that we need to move forward and enhance and improve our information, our technology information, our technology equipment. But when it gets laid out over a course of X amount of years, we need to understand why it's being spread out. Instead of, this is such a good, you know, good piece of equipment or a good program, why aren't we just doing it everywhere that we can? And I can understand the comments from the director as far as the priority with wastewater. But I'm also listening to my colleagues saying, you know, a year here, a year there. And all of a sudden, we're, you know, we're three, four years out of it. I like to think that we haven't lost an investment, that we've paid a chunk of it ahead of time and now we're just, you know, putting in components, you know, to help the other departments. But I just, I think it needs to be left up to us to decide on whether we want to go full force for everything or you give us the reasons why it, you know, we should, you know, stage it or phase it.
In some cases, so the report that the director indicated should answer many, if not most, of the questions that you might have. So I would, in the interest of time, I would defer to that and to any further conversation that the city council might like to have. In very general terms, and you'll see that the budget proposes in some cases that the projects are staged over two or potentially even three years. The investment of time and effort to populate new data systems is, can be very substantial so that it's not always the case that the system can simply be plugged in and then made immediately operational. In fact, in most cases, that's not the situation. The city council has expressed considerations and concerns about the pace and the deployment of the CMMS system previously. And again, we're not attempting to disregard those questions or to take any longer than is desirable or necessary in order to deploy the systems. We get you the report and then certainly we're prepared to have further discussion with the council on those topics. The next section, I believe, in the presentation is Streets Capital. And again, I would encourage a relatively concise presentation on the couple of projects that we've selected.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Yoon Jun Kim. I serve as city engineer for the Public Services Department. The Streets Program's intent is to incorporate all needed surface improvements for transportation and includes safety. Four projects are under construction, including the grade separation project. Four projects are under different phases of design and development and include sidewalk, streets, accessibility, and traffic calming. I would like to emphasize two projects of very high interest to the council due to the direct impact it has on the day-to-day quality of life. The first is the streetlight project. Staff received clear direction from council to improve the city's streetlight system by improving light distribution for safety and convenience, increasing reliability, and reducing monthly electric charges by using modern energy-saving light bulbs. Currently, the city uses high-pressure sodium lights, which is considered outdated. Conversion of these streetlight fixtures to the newer technology would greatly increase visibility and reduce the city's electrical consumption by fifty to sixty percent, resulting in cost savings of approximately seventy to eighty thousand dollars per year. There are two standard types of modern technology bulbs used in street lighting, LED and induction. These two types of bulbs use different technology to produce light but have similar lifespan, light quality, and efficiency ratings. The first step in our project would be to recommend a pilot project to enable you and the community to make a decision to determine which would best meet our needs. The recommendation of the pilot project location was discussed at the Infrastructure Subcommittee meeting a few months ago. After the decision is made, it is the intent to request proposals to implement the project. After approval of a proposal to replace the lights, other than lights that are on the regulated output circuits, the streetlights can be replaced in a few months' time with no initial investment requirement on city's part. As you can see, the LED and induction lighting quality is obviously better than the existing high-pressure sodium lights. The next item-
Mr. Rico, did you have a question?
Yes, Robert Rico, Seventh Avenue. I'm concerned a little bit on Sematel Avenue. Over the last couple of years, I've reported a number of times when the streetlights are out. And the information I've been getting back from the city is there's potentially influence by where you're getting the electricity, whether it's from PG&E or who's responsible. But more importantly, the, some of the same lights, they seem to need to be replaced real soon. In other words, there's one at Angus and Sematel Avenue on that corner that's probably, it appears to have been out three or four times within a year's period of time. So I would hope that they would look at maybe the infrastructure behind the lights that may need, not just on Sematel Avenue, but throughout the city, to support going to potentially the latest and better situation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will forward the information to our maintenance crew to check it out. The next item of special interest is the sidewalk program. The objective of this program is to provide a safe, accessible public sidewalk system. This is the last year of the city's current six-year cycle of sidewalk repairs, which has been focused on repairing sidewalk damages that are the city's responsibility. These damages were identified in a 2007 survey and updated on an ongoing basis through citizen feedback. At the conclusion of the project that's currently underway, the city will have repaired fourteen-hundred-and-seventy-five sidewalk locations, which includes one-hundred-and-forty locations that are responsibility of private property owners through their voluntary participation with our program. However, there are still approximately twenty-two-hundred known private property owner responsible deficiencies that are unaddressed. The upcoming program will focus on both private and city responsible repairs in a five-year cycle. This proposed project includes two parallel sub-projects. One will utilize a low-cost method to repair small offsets throughout the entire city, both private and city responsible repairs, and also update our sidewalk survey of existing deficiencies. The costs would be approximately thirty-five dollars per location. Because the cost is so low on this scale, it is cheaper for the city to perform the work rather than expend efforts to seek reimbursement from private property owners. This will reduce financial burden to property owners, only leaving them responsible for larger repairs that can only be addressed through full removal and replacement of sidewalk. And that goes to the second part of the program, which will address the more extensive sidewalk repairs, one neighborhood per zone per year in a five-year cycle. Starting in the east side of the city, where higher concentrations of damage exist, and working our way towards the west part of the city. The city will actively survey and repair sidewalks in each zone and include repairs outside that year's particular zone in response to citizen complaints and tripping hazard claims as necessary. City will advise property owners of their responsibility and give them the choice to utilize our contractor to perform the repairs or to perform the repairs on their own. Using our contractor would save them in permit costs, cheaper construction due to economies of scale, and avoid the hassles of managing their own contractor. That's, in a nutshell, the proposal for the next five-year program.
Thank you.
Before the director- Before the director and our city engineer leave the DAS, this would conclude our overview of the Streets Capital program in case you have any questions about that section of the budget. Okay?
We're good.
Okay. So, moving along to the Parks and Facilities Capital Program. This is an area of particular interest and concern in that the city has a number of critical facilities. And I don't mean only those essential service facilities that house our public safety operations, our fire stations, our police station. But the critical facilities of City Hall, our library, our recreation center, our swimming pool that are essential to the broad range of services that the city provides to its residents. As the city council is aware, those facilities, for the most part, many of them are relatively old. In some cases, deteriorating in some aspects of their serviceability. And many of them in need of, frankly, of replacement, but at least moderate to significant repairs and potentially improvements to keep pace with service needs and interests of our community. This section of the budget does a modest job of identifying those projects and issues that need attention during the next five-year period. What this budget doesn't do is to address the long, in a meaningful way, except by information to keep this issue in front of you, does not address with a funding program or a work program schedule the bigger-picture issue of long-term replacement of these critical facilities, which is an issue that still needs a comprehensive evaluation and discussion among staff in the city council. As such, the program is really focused on those areas of repair and maintenance that can be addressed with a reasonable financial expenditure and those limited areas of improvement, which are either absolutely necessary or can be afforded. We're going to focus on a couple of projects tonight, but by no means do I intend to overlook either the issues that I've just identified or the broad number of projects that are envisioned in this budget, primarily to address relatively minor facility maintenance and repair issues. And most particularly, a number of roof replacement requirements at some of our facilities, including the Portola Performing Arts Center, as well as, which is newly incorporated in this program, as well as roof replacement at our fire stations. I want to speak briefly on one project that has been identified in our capital improvement program for a few years. I think that the slides behind me are focusing, for refreshing your memory's sake, on some of the various facilities around the community that the city owns and, for the most part, operates. Most of them are not particularly attractive. But again, this program is intended to, to the best of our ability, maintain their serviceability so that they can continue to provide the programming and the other services for which they're designated. I wanted to focus for a moment on the City Hall Building and Security Improvement Project. This project has been shown in the Capital Improvement Program for the last couple of years, but has not moved forward to an actual construction program, which we propose to do in the coming year. In short, the cities, among the city's activities is revenue collection in particularly three spots within our city that is a substantial portion of our service and is a relatively significant amount of transactions and dollar value of transactions that are occurring. Given that we do our business in public facilities, our buildings are open to the public. We encourage the public to access our buildings, both to do business with us and to participate in programs. And there can sometimes be a conflict between those public spaces and the necessary security that is both desirable and important for those areas of our buildings where revenues are being collected. We are proposing with this project to provide some improvements to our lobby area of City Hall and ultimately to the lobby area of our recreation center as well as the lobby area of the Cable Department building in order to enhance security and to assure not only that our functions are segregated, our employees and members of the public are safe, but that there is a proper level of safety and security for the revenue transactions that are occurring in those locations. That project is described in a little bit more detail in the- That project is described in a little bit more detail in the budget document that you have in front of you. We have a little more ways to go and further discussion to detail the exact improvements that we're proposing with the city council. To date, we have conducted a review with professionals in our Public Safety Department in order to evaluate both the risks as well as the desirable improvements, and we have made some initial outreach to local contractors who have the expertise in those types of improvements. So again, we will be back to discuss these items further with the city council over the next year. The next item that we'd like to discuss briefly with the city council is the Tree Management Program, which, again, is an area of significant activity in our community and is a new project this year in the budget.
City Chair, just to go back-
Certainly.
-before we get off the buildings to the trees. So my understanding is the proposed security enhancements are just that, security enhancements, not remodels to the facility or structure. It just would be a look at security enhancements only to those designated areas that there's interaction with the public and the staff.
The security enhancements that are proposed would be physical improvements, physical changes to the lobby areas where revenue transactions are occurring, to separate with security barriers. So it's not a reorganization or a massive remodel, but it is a physical improvement that is proposed.
Just want to get that clarified. And I know you had a picture of Portola Activity Center and Skyline Activity Center.
Mm-hmm.
Now, that was one of my questions in here, because I had looked through it before, and then while you were speaking, I was looking through it again. I didn't see it listed. The Portola, yes, but the Skyline Activity Center, and I know that's something that I and others have brought up, knowing the history, that used to be utilized for programs, activities, and rentals.
Mm-hmm.
Used to do that.
Yes.
Rented out, and then we stopped renting it because of some resident complaints on the noise. Then it was utilized for other classes, et cetera, and then it, there was some damage to it, as far as water, if my memory is correct, and then therefore it's been more or less a storage. So was there something other than, that was going to be proposed in this year's budget? Because I, and maybe I just overlooked it?
No, thank you very much for the question. You did not, you did not find it in there because it's not in there. We did show a picture of the building because we wanted to give you a sort of a perspective of the various city facilities around town. Staff is very much aware of the city council's interest and concern about that facility. We have conducted a preliminary assessment of its condition and its ability to be transitioned back to some type of active programming use. Our initial conclusion, and the reason that it is not shown as a project in this budget, although we're certainly prepared to come back with a more comprehensive discussion with the city council, is that our initial evaluation has demonstrated that the building really is in such a serious state of disrepair that there is a substantial investment that would be necessary to return it to a level of serviceability that could actually, so that it could actually accommodate active programming. And that's the reason that this facility is not included in the budget right now, pending further consideration by the city council as to whether that is the direction that the council would like to know goes, really a complete rehabilitation, if not a tear-down and reconstruction of the building is really what's warranted.
If I can just clarify on how we go about getting these projects on board and breaking ground and doing this. Is there anything on these smaller types of projects that we can go defer from the normal bidding process and, you know, like the public works projects, and try to infuse the local businesses, you know, and try to get them involved in, you know, and hopefully, you know, being able to, you know, contribute to improving, you know, some facilities in our town? I've heard many times that, you know, through the bidding process, we've, you know, we've been hiring businesses that aren't even, are pretty far from where, you know, from our city limits, in that, you know, if given a chance, you know, that probably, you know, through, you know, pre-qualifying or something, that we can, or arrangements, I know we do it for certain companies in this city, that we can have, you know, an ongoing relationship with those types of providers, those types of contractors that can, you know, really, you know, do, you know, do all the good in our, you know, on our facilities, in our community.
I think I'm hearing two companion issues. One is the opportunity to encourage or forward volunteer or community contribution types of projects, and yes, there are strategies that we can employ that do not require competitive bidding that can allow us to better, some of which we've done with Lyons Projects, for example, with Beckner Shelter recently, and others. So, and Rotary, thank you very much. And so the answer is yes. Where the city is not expending its resources in acting as the doer of the project, there are opportunities for us to engage in community volunteer projects. Second issue that I hear you suggesting is really slightly different, and that, and, excuse me if I've misunderstood, is the, a process by which local contractors might receive some sort of a preference or benefit in a competitive bidding environment. That's a different issue and one that is subject to some limitations under state law, but is also an issue that we have no such preference programs in place in the city of San Bruno. It is something that can or could be considered as part of our normal bidding practices, but again, that would require a little bit more review and further discussion by the city Trees?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Just very briefly, I'd like to highlight a program that the city council has already made a significant annual investment in through the operating budget, and that's the City Tree Management Program. As the council will recall, back in August of 2010, we commissioned a study by a certified professional arborist to assess the condition of what I like to refer to as our urban forest, comprised of approximately 7,400 trees in parks medians, open spaces, facilities, and parking lots. Of those trees, 226 were identified as requiring either significant pruning to reshape or to deal with disease or removal altogether. And although we've had in the annual operating budget for some time now a $25,000 appropriation, we have found over the last few years since the completion of the study that that money is only adequate to deal with the annual needs and that we're really not able to, in a material way, address this inventory that needs to be attended to. And so what you see before you in the capital budget is a request for a $75,000 appropriation for each year of the five-year CIP with the goal of dealing with and addressing each of these trees. Now, the actual cost is a little bit unknown. What we're going to do on an annual basis is get quotes on the most serious trees that either present a risk to the urban forest or to the safety of the community. And the range on those costs is between $1,500 and $4,000, depending on accessibility, the size of the tree, and the attention the tree requires. But we anticipate that the appropriation at a $75,000 level over the five-year of the CIP potentially will not address all of the 226 trees, but the volume of trees that will be addressed in any given year will increase as we deal with them, from the most severe to the lesser severe trees. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions on trees? Rico?
I know it's late. So do we have that already, we don't have it determined as far as the worst-
We do.
We do. Okay. So, once this comes back up, City Manager, I'd like to have it more addressed as far as how many we're dealing with in an annual basis, in the areas in which we're dealing with them? Because obviously, through reduction in services over tight, lean budget years, we have reduced the amount that we actually go out to each of the sites, neighborhoods, and do tree trimming. So I'd like to, once we get this, I'd like to look back, not only about this, but just the whole program, how we notify, how people in the community can go on this website that Mr. Jackson's speaking of, and look up very quickly on my street, my area, and when the year it is determined. I think it's a shock to folks when they realize, whether it's a street or whether it's a tree, how long it's earmarked out for. So I'd like to see that included within the website. I'd like to also revisit that just to have an understanding, since we had those reductions, unfortunately. Because of those tough times, I'd like to have that looked at again.
Anything else? It is 9:30, and it looks like we're not going to get through the rest of it this evening, since we have a meeting tomorrow night, too, and maybe Saturday. So can we put this off until maybe the next, the next meeting?
The council's pleasure. We can either bring this back at a, at a meeting that you would schedule, or we can bring it back on October 22nd, which is your next regular city council meeting.
Okay. That be all right? 22nd?
So we have-
How many more presentations do we have?
We have a short presentation on stormwater, on cable, and then we have the water and wastewater sections and vehicles.
Mr. Rico?
Can I just ask one question out of your agenda on the parks and facilities? You talk about the downtown marquee sign, that that needs some work, and speaking as my position on the board member of the Chamber of Commerce, I think that should get some higher priority because it's obviously what we, everybody sees driving up and down El Camino, so I just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, report of commissions, boards, and committees, we don't have any this evening. Comments from council members? Anything? Closed session? We don't have a closed session. This meeting is adjourned until the next council meeting, October 22nd, right here.